To the like of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 I accept the motion to approve the agenda December 12th, 2013 meeting as presented.
I'd like to make an action item to the agenda. Action item B, reimbursement or pay for a person representing the Village of Central Lake in any court actions. There's no problems with that and I would make your motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Vote for Bobby. Second by. Court, all in favor?
Aye.
Any public comments? Yes.
I have one. On Thanksgiving Day sometime before three o'clock in the afternoon, the plows came by and took out our basketball hoop that we had out off the road, but they didn't say anything to us and I called the township, left messages and then I think it was Monday or Tuesday, well, I called Bill to find out who I needed to talk to and.
Talking to White.
Left, well, you told me to call Sam and so I left messages with Sam.
Thank you.
And Sam came and talked with me and said that he told his plow guys to plow in farther and I said, "Well, then why weren't we told about that? We would have had it moved off farther because it's already two feet from where they already plow." And it, they took it and it went past our driveway and it was laying in the middle of the front yard and it's all busted up. My daughter's on the JV basketball team, she's all upset because the basketball hoop is all busted and I would like reimbursement for that. Our basketball hoop is busted, the trash can, we had a big metal barrel, that was dumped over and the bricks that were on the basketball hoop were laying in the driveway. And the integrity of the driver is questionable to me because if, if it would have hit one of the vehicles in the road or in the driveway, would he have come to the door and told me that this even happened because they never did? And Sam's comment was, "Well, we don't have time for that. We don't have time to let you, you know, people know that our, we're changing how far we, we plow in or whatever." And it's like, "Well, how are we supposed to know if our stuff is safe on our property?" So I'm very upset about that. I did bring pictures, if you'd love to see pictures, I've got them on my phone. But it's one of the big basketball things that are on the plastic bottom, the buyers that go on the plastic bottom are busted right off, you can't fix it. And the basket itself is bent up. So that's my comment and I hope, because I do pay taxes and, you know, the thing's been there, never had a problem with it before with the plows and now all of a sudden it's destroyed and nobody even let us know about it. Thank you. Do I have to state my name or anything? I didn't think I did. Kelly Guy.
Thank you.
And I live at 7951 Bradford Street, right next to the North House on that street there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, Sam will talk about it later, right? Okay. We'll call the church and we'll, we'll get back to you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Kelly Meeppa. Most of you already know me, I'm your district lead, I'm from Crowley, starting my fourth term. Want to say thank you, appreciate your help and support, totally yours. Got a couple new members, I'm going to introduce myself to them, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
How are you, Rob?
Public comment? We will hold public comment and I just realized I skipped over approval of minutes. I accept the motion to approve the minutes of November 12th, 2013, regular board meetings. Second by there. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Please report, Scott.
Thank you. Hopefully you get a chance to look it over. A little bit busier this month than the previous month, probably because we had more time to patrol and not working on actual complaints. Everything is listed on there, some extra time on some other investigations, sporting events. Central Lake had the district volleyball game, so we spent a lot of time up there, just keep an eye out there. Trolcar, we put that away, but before it got put away, there's a recall on the steering linkage, steering linkage, which is just the normal type of recall thing. It's actually been in twice, it's got to go in a third time because Ford keeps sending it back and they have to make sure it's what it needs and they don't want to preorder the parts unless they need it. So at some point this winter, we'll probably have to dig it out of the DPW garage and take it up there to get it fixed, so. It's not really a concern for us because we're not driving it this winter, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sam, DPW.
Everybody should have copied the report. We had one water leak up on Howard Street, consumer faults. The LED lights were delivered on the 14th of November, we got them all changed out with streetscape lights, the camping park. We got, we ordered seven LED Cobra heads, they were swapped out, they're all up and going, repaired the 94 plow truck. All the fire hydrants have been checked for water, they didn't drink, we drink, we haven't drank. We removed one stump up in front of the congregation church, it's all cleaned up. And overtime for last month was 14 hours. Any questions?
Can I make up really any questions? So a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the side blade or wing blade for plow trucks and I know we had some concerns on whether or not a single axle will handle it.
Still checking into it.
Okay, I, I talked today, I took a couple of minutes and I called Truck and Trailer Butch, calling it there and talked with him and he, he informed me that the trucks downstate are loving them, that are using them. Says it pretty much cuts your plow times in half, no problems with a single axle truck running it. He also mentioned that Odawa has a international single axle in the area that if we wanted to look at, they would be more than willing to bring it in if you wanted to schedule with them on something like that.
The city of, did I tell you?
No.
Nobody's using them too, so. Apparently all of them. And I got some other emails, I'll check and handle to respond to that.
Any other questions, President? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
I received a letter asking that we write a, from the Northern Light Economic Alliance for the Brownfield Redevelopement Authority of Antrim, Charlotte, Boynton, Allen County to apply for an EPB Brownfield grant to identify inventory assessive position property for redevelopment. So they sent a sample letter, so we still develop and send it back in support of it. So that was taken care of. This one, I just received today, so I will read it to you. It's from Brian Grant. The situation recently crossed my desk concerning the failure of a property owner to clean up debris resulting from a structure fire. While this situation can be addressed through enforcement of the municipality's nuisance ordinance, another means to ensure cleanup of this debris is through the state fire insurance withholding program. Under this program, the municipality can pass a resolution to have funds withheld from final insurance settlements due to fire explosions to ensure removal of burned out structures. The resolution typically names, typically names the clerk as the party responsible for filing a required insurance form and for establishing an escrow account to withhold deposits received from insurers. This escrow account must be a separate account from any other municipal account and can earn interest. Once the resolution and form is filed with the state, the insurance company is required to withhold 25% of the actual cash value of the insured real property or 25% of the final settlement, whichever is less. The insurance company then must notify the municipality, the insured and others of withholding. Within 15 days of the mailing of this notification, the municipality must notify the insurance company that the amount withheld must be paid into the escrow account established by the clerk to protect the public health and safety. There are a number of technical requirements that must be completed. If your municipality is interested in this program, please let me know, I will be happy to prepare the necessary resolution and required insurance form. So, any thoughts on that?
Have we had any problems like that with that?
Not that I know of, but.
It's not a bad idea.
Yeah, this I know Bel Air did at one point and I know my opinion would be to see what kind of price Brian wants to put on this because it will prevent a future problem.
Yes.
So would you like me to call Brian and?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay, I doubt it's a whole lot of money, but I know and we'll tell them how to talk about the finance and your permission will proceed if it's not a large amount of money. I just think it's a good thing to have it placed. Okay, I will call Brian. Well, like you said, there is like within nuisance, but nothing holds your money. This way the money is there, deposited in escrow account, so if they don't clean it up, we get the money, they don't get it, so. I'll give them a call. I just saw that today, so I haven't even talked to Brian about that. That's all the correspondence, I'll save the rest for my report. Committee report, Rob?
December 4th at 8:30 AM, we met with Consumers Energy with myself, Sam Owens and Ken Cruzey from Consumers with Tim Petrowski, area manager, Linda Markland, team leader. They brought out their energy audit and this is what it revealed. We billed 10 overhead bulbs, too many, we're going to back credit to us for three years at 7% interest. And so I did some quick ciphering here. Costs us for one light, $207 a year run, so you multiply that by nine and that's $1,863. That was per year times three years, so that's $5,589 plus the tag on the 7% interest, that's So we should get a credit of $5,980.23 if they're doing a straight 7% interest on the total amount. If it's compounded annually, at 7% annually, we should be getting again $6,707.22 back. But don't get too excited because we're being billed at the residential rate of 14 cents a kilowatt hour. We're now going to be billed at the general service primary rate. What that rate is, we're not sure yet. It's buried in 235 pages of Consumers Energy's, I don't even know what to call it. I tried, I bet it calls, so. I honestly truly think that it's gonna, we're not going to see that much. I, I think that when we get, go back over to the general service primary rate, which is going to be higher than our 14 cents per kilowatt hour currently being charged on our 34, our 34 streetscape lamps, that's going to be rewatched. Item three, overhead lights, we looked into switching them over to LED, the Cobra headlights. We're not going to be switching them over to LED anytime soon. It costs $1,900 to replace the lights back over to LED, even though the lights we bought for the park cost $330 each and the DPW crew replaced, what, six of them in one day, Sam? So where they're getting $1,900 when they replace six of them and they don't do it for a living that quickly.
That's a per light fixture, you're talking to the 1900?
Ninety, per light. So it's just cost prohibitive. And the other one, quote, "They are not convinced there's any energy savings in LED at this time." And that's Consumers Energy. Third raise, third reason, excuse me, is the strobe light effect. They feel that the LED casts a narrower light down and as you drive through the town, you get what is called the strobe light effect. Upon further inquiry, the strobe lighting effect only occurs after 50 miles an hour. Our maximum speed in the village is 35, so that won't even affect them, but again, they were worried about that. Item four, we do have, from our energy audit, we showed that we did have nine Cobra headlights still on the mercury vapor. We are going to switch those over and there will be a cost savings, again, they couldn't tell us how much. The energy conservation program they have, they are going to switch out the mercury vapor over to high pressure sodium. Again, we looked into eliminating some streetlights. If there is a redundancy and we can get away with some, get eliminating a few lights here and there, we could save $207 a year. But again, it costs $500 to have them take down one light. That's just the Cobra head and the, and the mounting bracket. So again, it's $500 to take it down, costs us $207 a year to leave it up and have it up and running. So it'd be over, it'd be almost three years before we would actually see any savings in taking those lights down. So again, it's, we can explore it if we want to, but we would not see any savings for at least a three-year time. And if we didn't like it and we wanted to go back, it would be 1,800 more dollars to put it back on again. We also have to take the decorative clock at the corner of Old State Road and M88 off of the streetscape lighting because if we want to get the special streetscape lighting cost, so we're going to have to look into doing that because that's not part of their energy conservation program and it is just one light. Let's see, other things. That was lights. Streets, at the last DDA meeting, it was suggested that the DPW crew could remove more than two inches of, of snow off the sidewalks earlier. They met with Sam and it was agreed that they would come in early and have it removed by 7:00 AM. After that time, the business owners would be incumbent on themselves to remove that snow. So if the DPW crews came in early, they would just leave that much earlier. So if they came in at 8:00 AM, they would leave at noon. Or excuse me, 4:00 AM, they would leave at noon. Oh, I'm sorry, back to streetlights. We do have a call in to shaver lighting, get two more Cobra heads in the park at 50 watts each because we were missing two. They still have not gotten back to us. And again, we do have calls with Consumers to see what our actual, our general service primary rate will switch from. You know it's going to go up from 14 kilowatt hours, but what it's going up to, we don't know yet. That is it.
Got it all?
It was a long meeting, it was a fun meeting.
I got a question. Is there any way that we can, I know it's burden on Sam, but in front of the pharmacy especially, if you try to go in there in this weather to pick up a prescription or anything, I almost fell trying to get up to the sidewalk because of the stuff that was in it, I couldn't. And I had my cane with me and I, I had a hard lady come up and tried to help me up the sidewalk.
Did it?
Did it, yes.
You removed all the snow this morning, sidewalks were cleaned.
It wasn't the clean, it wasn't, sorry, honey, it was the ditch, I mean the.
What happens after six o'clock in the morning?
Can't do anything.
I can't do anything. Come and go serve, just the height of the road, plow the back under the curb.
Oh, jeez.
And what's going to, if we get our big loader up there during the day, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to hit a $500 car and buy a $10,000 car. That's reality.
Yeah, I understand.
I think she's talking about just the height of the curb pissed up over.
Oh, I think, I think she was talking about the snow.
I'm talking about the slush and the snow right off the.
Oh, not the, not the height of the curb.
No, 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 not that, no.
Okay, I thought it was that.
Strictly the mess that you try to step, you can't figure out how deep it is or anything and then you try to get to the sidewalk and it's difficult.
You know, we clean it up in the morning, just like tomorrow morning, we'll be out there four o'clock in the morning, by seven o'clock, all the sidewalks, curb and ground will be clean. What happens after that? I can't, it snows, it's got to go somewhere, come and push it back under the curb. I don't know what's like.
Okay.
Yeah, it is because the cars are parked here, it's, I don't think there's any, I really don't think there's an answer, I really don't. In the next day and clean it all up by seven in the morning, you know?
I understand, well. I didn't realize it was the county was pushing the snow back up there.
Well, they have to take it off the block top and put it somewhere, that's the only place you can remember. All the snow's got to go off one side of the truck, right hand side, no matter what.
Okay.
Because that's the curb side.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
I want to thank you, Sam, for, for being willing to change their schedules they came in. I got to tell you, I, I think our town has looked great the last couple times it's snowed in the morning. It's been off the sidewalk, through the curbs, the roads clean and snow out of town, so. Thank you, I think you've done a great job there.
And Rob, you did a thorough job on that, I gotta admit.
It was a long meeting.
You did a very thorough job.
I'll agree, it was a long meeting. Any other questions for Rob? No one else, I think, except putting up LEDs, nobody's noticed the LEDs in town and in the park. To me, an amazing difference, I'm just really glad we did it. We'll see a cost savings on them, I think it's wonderful.
The reason Rob told you we had to get two more is because I missed counting, that's all it was. I thought there were seven, there's nine total.
Nine, nine streetlights were replaced or?
Nine security lights in the park.
Nine security lights in the park.
Well, seven have been changed to this point, two are to be ordered to be.
And how many streetscape lights?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two streetscape lights. I noticed a big difference, 32 of the lights on the streetscape were changed to LED.
Thirty-two on the street and nine in security lights in the park.
Oh, yeah, I think it just makes an amazing difference.
So Rob, the lights of yours, I think about changing over to LED with the big Cobra.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That's pretty much all of our hands is what I got. Those never changed. It's just until, until the state steps in and demands something changes, it's, they improve their rates and tariffs, that was their answer to quite a bit, wasn't it? That's, that's our rate and tariffs, they were sad.
And, excuse me, I'm sorry, the, where's the Cobra lights at?
There are all the other streetlights in town, the ones that hang up on the poles. The downtown lights on the, on the lamp poles, those are metered and paid for by the village. Those are village owned lights.
And those are the Cobra lights?
Those, no, those are the streetscape lights.
Right.
They're the ones up on the pole.
Okay.
Cobra lights are the ones around all the, all the way out around town, just your regular streetlights.
Oh, okay.
Hanging on the poles, those are only by Consumers Energy.
And the one, the Cobra heads that we swapped out, that we put up that are LED now are in our camping park, we own them.
Those are the security lights you're talking about?
Right, yeah, those are owned by the village.
Right, we own them. Any light we own, we can swap.
Thank you for eliminating quite a bit of confusion.
Any other questions for Rob? Do we move on? Denise, so do I?
Nope, Sam covered everything in his report.
Thank you. Bill, walk with me.
Scott did a good job covering everything in here. A couple of things are, the complaints are up this year by nine and a half percent of the last year and we're working on the year ending evaluations in place. We're working on the budget.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Rod, can you make the issue?
Well, it's our first night with our new cameras, so we can make it public, all of our meetings will be put on eventually. Kind of a trial run, we're working on it. And the other one I got with Cory again tonight and he's going to do a little training with me since Denise and I changed committees. Just got to the passwords, we're going to work on so I know how to get on the backside of the webpage and so, besides Rachel, at least one or two or three of us will be able to get in there, so. Other than that, just kind of slowly working on and learning.
We talked about earlier in the office, it's kind of funny because it started out, Sam gets up in the morning and comes to town and this morning he got up and there was truly more snow than Sam's in town, so he didn't even come. So I said, "Well, we need a camera downtown, Sam." But honestly, I, I think we should look into having a webcam. Other towns do, I don't know the cost, I was going to get with Cory. One in the park is already set up with Wi-Fi, am I, can I correct on that? In downtown, we just have to get a deal to piggyback on the somebodies or how that works, so I think maybe Rod and Cory will talk. I think it'd be great, we could have one on our website and.
Maybe on the cell phone, call about straight, straight down Main Street.
Yeah.
Towards the parks, you know?
So if you get together with Cory and we talk, we get some prices and.
I believe Bella has got one, I don't know how often, I don't know what it is, but maybe we'll need somebody to talk to also about it. Yeah, on their website it says view camera or whatever, so.
So we'll be forward to that. Joe, find out to the person now. We've got two minutes.
I can't do it, Ken. All right, guys, the first thing we got, obviously everybody has a copy of the budget proposal. We always introduce the budget proposal, we try to in December here, so we can adopt it in January, that still gives us a month for any last minute corrections that need to go through. Basically, you're going to look at it, it's pretty much the same as last year with two exceptions, really. One first exception you should see is the camping park is no longer funded through the 101. The code of accounts, chart of accounts allowed us to bring the campground to a standalone fund because it is paid for by funds through the campground only. So that has been moved out to, I believe, a 508 number and we'll have to get with Rachel and the auditors to make sure, or assist to make sure that our numbering sequences are all correct in that, but that should be a 508, you'll see. Also, beyond that, you should also see that with the creation of the DDA, they now have a account also or a fund which is, we don't have any of the numbers for yet until we can get with the assist and the chart of accounts to make sure. Also in that DDA, they have asked us this year to appropriate $20,000 for downtown area improvements. We found it in the budget, it's not necessarily the easiest look at because we are appropriating money into our budget with our grant application. I don't know exactly how we want to work it, the numbers are in the budget, so I, if I were to pull up, some of the things that they were looking at doing is a skate park, ice skating rink in the downtown area. I believe Michelle Bachman has, has volunteered to allow the open space between Patton or New Star Insurance and Mission Computers to be upgraded and used as a common area. They want to put in some benches, some flower pots, of course, they're going to have their office and needs of the DDA, which will be postage, office supplies, mailers, stuff like that. So we did put it into the budget, so you'll see that in there. Going back with the grant application, you'll notice in the 101 that we have appropriated a transfer in out of fund balance of $52,126. Not all of which will stay in the 101, some will move into campground and some will move and stay in the 101 for day parks, which would be the boardwalk and dock area. The campground will get a percentage of that appropriation due to the bath house that will be dedicated to the campground, so that we get an appropriation in that one to fund our grant matching funds. So other than that, basically look at the budget, any questions, bring them. Hopefully next month, we will hold our public hearing on the budget to approve it or not, any last minute changes or what have you.
Is that grant fund separate from the docks?
Yes and no. What we did was, we have a grant matching funds of, I believe, $86,000 roughly. Because we pretty much figured the bath house is almost half of the cost of the grant, we split that matching funds, half of it to the campground and half of it into the day parks. That's, that's kind of the roundabout way to go with it. Luckily, the campground has made money over the last few years, this year, one of the greatest years it's had in a long time, so that helped to offset some other costs and happenings within the campground. I also did put in, I believe it was $2,000 extra into repair and maintenance, or capital improvements in the campground, for some of the things that you and I all had marked off on that stuff, that we can go over as, as things go, so I just set them into it. So, on the budget, if everybody's pretty straightforward with it, look at it, bring back your questions, contact me, or next month, whatever.
The thing with you talking about downtown park, though, are not going to be done until spring, right?
No, there will be nothing, I don't think will happen until spring anyways.
Okay.
Yep. Moving on from that, I talked about the DDA and the camp valley, the other thing I have, guys, I've been in a lot of safety training here lately through my work, and it got me to thinking some other things, and I just recently found out, Bellaire was hit with an OSHA spot inspection, or surprise inspection. Luckily, they fared fairly well with it, by the time they were done correcting what they could correct, their fines were very minimal. I'd like to take and maybe bring a consultant in, I've talked a little bit with one already, he was at a very minimal cost, he'll come in, he'll sit down with us, he'll look at where we're at in our safety program, and he will advise us where to go to get us up to full compliance, if we're lacking at all even. We don't know that we are, but I can't see is where this would hurt us. I think it's very important that not only do we make sure our guys are going home at night, but they go home with their fingers and toes. So, for a minimal cost to have him come in, help get us lined up, make sure we're in the right directions, we're not getting caught with equipment that isn't up to standard, there are guys that are, we're supplying as much safety as we can to our guys, to ensure. I can bring this guy in for roughly $150 to $200 for an initial consultation. I'd like to, at that point, if things go well and it works good, I talked with Ken, Sted and Bellaire, and he's not against it, but he would also, he would have to take it to his board also, of maybe getting a joint cooperation in local municipalities. Bring in Bellaire, bring in the township, bring in Elworth, all of us, Central Lake, do a joint safety training program for all municipalities around. The guy I talked with, to do something similar to that, he would charge $300 a meeting, the more we get involved with it, the, the cheaper the cost to each one of us is. And again, I just, I think safety's a big thing, and I don't think we can script when it comes to making sure that we're providing the best we can for our employees. So, if nobody has a problem with that, I'd like to get with Sam and schedule a time that this gentleman could come in, have a sit-down, have a couple council members there present also.
Maybe talk to risk management through insurance.
I, last year, I talked with the MML, trying to get some direction in which ways to go, nobody has set forth a specific guideline, they pretty much all say, follow my OSHA standards. My OSHA's got so many different standards out there, you really could bog yourself down in trying to find the specific program for you that's gonna fit a municipality, I guess, the best. And for me, honestly, it was much easier to contact a guy that I know, he's got the company, he's got 35 years of safety consultants through Shell, Amoco, and so on, he graduated from Grand Valley, took over the company from his father, so. I just think that's an easier way for us to go, a little better, it's out of our hands, we're not the ones telling them, you have to do this, you have to do that, it all comes from a third party, say, this is where we need.
I believe Sam has a training program or something out there.
I think he does, now, he's doing some videos and stuff, and I'm not saying we're not doing everything right, I'm just, I just want to make sure we're doing as much as we can. Like I said, Bellaire got hit with theirs, they weren't expecting it, luckily, they were able to fix a lot of things, some of the things they got fined for were very minor things, guards on equipment, guards on older mowers. The OSHA inspector, from what Ken said, the OSHA inspector went through a lot of their paperwork stuff, making sure it was up to date, all their legal postings were done, that they changed from MSDS over to material data sheets now, all these new standards that are out there. You know, and then, one that I just happened to talk with the safety guy about was H2S training. Each one of our municipalities has a sewage treatment facility, but yet, none of them have been trained in H2S, it's a major contributor to or developer of H2S. I think it's important that we ensure these guys have the best training they can. And it's a minimal cost, I think, so.
What would you say minimal?
Well, starting out, roughly, $200 for a consultation, and then, from there, depending how it could grow. If, if Bellaire wanted to get involved and we went to a monthly meeting schedule, it would all depend on how many different groups we could put into it. If the township wanted to get involved, Bellaire wanted to get involved, and Elworth, 300 divided by four. You know, it, it all depends on how many different groups wanted to get involved with it.
And you'll, you'll never coincide all them people to show up at the same time, that ain't gonna happen, that's reality.
And I. Talk with the township on trying to.
I, I don't, I, I talked a little bit with one of the trustees, and they weren't against it, actually seemed pretty excited about it, thought it was a great idea, whether or not that'll go into board meeting or not, I don't know. But I'm not, I'm not so sure we couldn't get the majority of people to be in one spot at one time, the group that I'm in with right now, when I do my safety training, is the first Wednesday of every month, there's five different companies there, and we all know, we, we know right now, I can give you a schedule of what my next year's safety meetings are, so they're scheduled, you figure it in, you just plan on being there. I mean, even, I think even if we do a minimal to make sure that we're on the right track and we are doing the right thing.
Reality is, it doesn't matter what we do down there, Joey, you're not gonna be happy about it, that's reality. My last two years have been a nightmare with you on this council, you're not happy with anything that goes on down there, you aren't my job, that's what it boils down to.
I don't believe I want to.
And you're doing everything possible you can to get me to walk out the door, that's why you brought this up. I sat down, I, I went through all the procedures with Michigan Municipality Safety Training Program that we never had, I had ten persons come downtown, and what can I do to help? Well, and he gave me all kinds of information, we went with it, we're going with it, we're trying our own, that's not good enough for you.
I guess, if I just want you guys to be safe or know that we're doing the best we can, if you don't agree with that, Sam, I'm sorry, but, did we or did we not have an incident last year where a guy was injured?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Accid, that's why they call them accidents.
And?
That's why they call them accidents.
Well, I, I leave it up to the board, I, I think the more safety we provide and train, we have a responsibility to make sure we do the best we can for the employees, some may not like it, but I think we have a responsibility as employers to ensure we are providing the best we can.
I think, can, can this work and build on what Sam's already got?
Absolutely, that's why I say, if we bring this guy in, he'll, no, he'll look at what we're doing, what we haven't been doing, if, if we're doing everything great, he's gonna say, you guys are doing a good job, he's gonna walk out the door and we'll never see him again. I can't see is where it would hurt.
No, I wouldn't think that would hurt, but, you know, I agree with Sam, he asked, and I remember that they did, they tried to get the township to go, and I think they made it a couple of them, and they weren't able to coordinate their times with ours.
No, I just put it out there, it's up to, up to the board.
Any thoughts for the streets?
None.
Water?
My initial thought, my initial thought would be.
I got nothing to talk about.
My initial thought would be just let it ride like, like we're going, and Sam says that he has safety things and.
I got, no, I got personal issues with Joe, that's what it bothers him, he's undermined, ever since he walked in here, everything had dumped, that's where the issues lie at. I keep saying we'll put a sign on their garage door, SRW West, Joe Baden, Production Manager.
Any questions for Joe on? Take a good look at the budget numbers. Because next month, we'll have a back, we'll have our hearing next month, we'll get it scheduled. The reason for that is, we have to do it in February, it's nice to do in January, in case something comes up and it doesn't go smoothly, we're ninety-nine percent sure it will, it gives us February, because one year it didn't happen, and we had two special meetings, so, since then, we decided to really try and avoid that, so we will have a final budget, and the public hearing will be prior to the January meeting. So, if you have any, anything you see on the budget, let Joe know, I mean, he's put a lot of work into it, so is Rachel, so, and so is everybody, Sam, everybody, so, a lot of work put into it already, so, thank you all. We will move on then. Lila, parts?
Well, there's nothing new, we're just waiting to see about the grants, whether that we get them, and how soon, remount and everything, so, and at the moment, the park is pretty quiet.
Did we get the permit renewal?
Not, yes, we did get that, it's okay, everyone is.
Any questions for you? Well, all I have is on the grant, and anybody who's seen the, you know, knows we got it, thanks to Lynn, there was a very nice article in here, it was kind of last minute, which it was all kind of happened last minute today, we received a letter from the DNR, we had applied for a DNR trust fund development grant. It's just amazing how good we did, I tell you, out of a hundred and two applicants, we were sixteen applicants, so, we, everybody, I thank everybody by name, and I miss some people, so everybody involved, we, we put a lot of work together fast, I think everybody was surprised we got it first right through, so, it was a very good grant, so we were glad to get it. So, then we all wondered, how fast does it happen now, so I called the guy from the DNR today on this letter. They recommended it to the governor, now it goes through the appropriations, the, the money truly is there, the DNR has the money, so now they wait for permission to spend it on what it was promised for, it's basically what it boils down to, the trust fund money. In 2012, that happened in August, in 2013, it happened the end of March, so they're all very hopeful, same group of people in place, that it happens late March, early April. Until that happens, nobody's gonna be willing to spend any money on anything, because if you do, and something bizarre would have to be happened, because it never has, but if something did happen, you just out that money. So, Gordy Frazier, right, I had the same talk with them, they said the same thing, they would never recommend any of that, the only one thing we have to have in place. At, at the time, they finally get notified and governor signs it, that the money's there, at least, they will let us know, at that point, we truly do sign an agreement with the DNR, because as we knew going into it, that property then becomes public use for perpetuity, that's the one condition. We will have to have a detailed legal description and a clear boundary map, like, I think that can happen pretty quick, I, myself, I don't want to invest any money, I would probably call Brian Graham and see, because he will probably, he will prepare that for us, so, most rightly, have to have that by the time we sign the agreement. Other than that, nothing's gonna happen until it does, so, Gordy Frazier's got their fingers crossed, we do that, hopefully, early April, it gets signed and we can move forward, if not, 2012 was a mess, they said like that till August before they finally agreed to sign it. So, that's what we're, I think Joe covered it, it was eighty-seven-five our match on the application, we said we would cover it with thirty-one-five of DPW work, now, of course, those are preliminary numbers, if, if the DPW can do more work, which they're more than willing to do, we'll cover it more with matching dollars, the work from the DPW.
How are we gonna thank the people that, on that week we got the information back, that we were missing a few items, and they came through for us in a pinch, a couple of businesses wrote a letter on a Friday afternoon, Shelley Durenzi at the high school, Friday, at three o'clock, on school letterhead, Gary Johnson. I just, I want to make sure that we thank them personally, so that way, if we ever go to a grant again, they'll say, well, gee, the first time around, you know, I, you know, I stayed after, on a Friday afternoon, and, you know what I mean, didn't hear a thing, I just want to make sure that the people that went out on a limb for us, we thank them up and down, because the two weeks we had to put our ducks in a row, I felt that everybody in this community really came together.
They did.
And I want to make sure that we really thank them, because it was been.
I have one over here, says, thanks for grant, write a letter, I think we'll all get together, this might, oh, we should, I don't want to miss anybody.
All right.
Then I think we should put together a nice letter, and send it out to all the peoples or entities, Commission on Aging, the Chamber of Commerce, the school, some people individually, I'd like to send a letter to the DNR thanking them for approving us, but, so I think we need to write up a nice little letter, and anybody who has any names, just let me know.
I have those to home, wherever you go, drop them.
I think everybody can send this letter, we can send one back, I really, it was a huge thing they did for us to get it to go through, so, we really gotta show our appreciation, so. Anybody very, that happening, the LED lights happening, there's been some positive things, the DDA had a great meeting, Monday night, am I right, Cor?
Confused, I don't remember.
Wednesday, whatever, Wednesday night, very, very good meeting, two hour meeting, very good, they have a lot of great ideas for downtown, so, like you said, in our budget, we will put some money aside for it, so now they can work up a budget, because as we know, without, they need some money to work with, so. I know there's a lot of talk about a skate rink in different areas in town, so, the DDA's will look into that, I mean, I think it's coming along great, really looking pretty positive. So, that's all my report, other than, I don't know. Speaking of surprising.
Payday.
Speaking of this, can I jump back into our budget for a moment, just so everybody also is aware, this budget that we are proposing also reflects a 1.5% increase, cost of living increase to the employees, so I'm raising the way of that. If they want the, if you guys want the numbers, look, that hits our, our budget totally, I can come up with them fairly quickly for you here. At 1.5% increase, that's six hundred twenty-five, or six hundred twenty-six oh five a year to Sam, for Steve, that would be 22 cents per hour increase, for Jeff, it would be 20 cents per hour, for Scott, it would be a $543.38 a year increase, and for Lyle, the park manager, it would be $3.87 per week for increase, so.
Does that include part-time workers?
But it does not include any of the part-time people, this is only done right now for the full-time employees, or what's considered full-time on it, is what we've done so far, so, I forgot to mention that earlier.
And you just put that in there, should the council decide they want to do it?
If the council wants to do it, it is in the budget, it showed, no, until we approve the budget, it's not done, but if we do approve it, there is a 1.5% increase to the employees on that, for cost of living increase.
Any questions for me, I'm ready to order.
I will accept the motion to approve payment of bills, prepaid the amount of $4,916.26, payable the amount of $5,118.42, payable's the amount of $12,433.09, for total approved bills of $22,477.77.
Make a question, pay the bills?
Chapman?
Supporter?
I can buy. Tyler? Roll call?
Yeah, to me.
Yes.
Yes.
Chapman?
Clark?
Yes.
There.
Yes.
Tyler?
Yep.
Yes.
Hey, under new business, preliminary budget, which I think Joe covered, can hit you quite well. Snow removal DDA, which I think was covered by Rob quite well. First action item is to approve the sale of a house located 8096 West State Street, as we know, it's written up for the church to have their sixty days, they did that, as far as we're concerned, the void has been removed, if you have any questions on that, just please ask. I think it's met all the criteria, so Brian Graham has prepared a quitclaim deed for exactly what the deal was, $6,361.91. With the board's approval, we will present it to the first congregational church to be signed, and we will sign off. When we vote on it, Lila and I will abstain from voting with the attorney's approval.
I'm sorry, Ken, what was that amount again?
Three thou, $6,361.91. So, is there any questions on that? So is there any questions on that?
Point of word, senior of steam?
That's why we call them. A Ryan recommendation that we do, so that comes from Brian Graham, yes.
Ken and I are both on the board.
It's a gray area, but it's best to avoid it. We will abstain. So I would accept the motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Motion by Chapman. Support that. Bobby. Do a roll call, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yep.
Motion passes. Thank you. Joe, if you'd like to speak on your...
Alright, on the action item B, a couple of months ago, I brought up a reimbursement for basically the same pay as a seminar or a meeting for somebody who is in court representing the village of Central Lake. I do this many times, Ken has, went taking his day out, taking a day off, work, whatever, to represent Central Lake in court, and I think he should be at least compensated as a meeting cost or a seminar cost, such as... I think that would apply to anybody who is representing the village in such scenario. So I would like to basically say, probably no back pay, but any future representation?
That's 7% interest.
Uh, no, no, no back pay, only future representation. Right, yeah.
What about travel expenses?
Them are already covered by the village for things that you do with the village, so. So I, I would make a motion that we add that to our pay scale, I guess. I'm not exactly sure, whether it's added in our handbook or a policy, I guess, or we make a policy that anybody representing the village in a professional capacity be reimbursed as a...
I think a label capacity.
Pardon me, other council members.
I'll support that.
Motion by Bobby, I can buy Cart. My only comment would be, we'll have to check, but I, I, I mean, we can vote to move forward in this. I think in our book, it has to land the table for 30 days. But if we approve it, we can do it, and we'll probably come back and have a number vote on it, but it is still in our favor moving forward. So, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. You'll look into that, I believe it's 30.
Has there been any news about pursuing that lawsuit that happened? Remember when people supported?
Yes, it's on Brian Graham's desk still, so it hasn't been turned over yet. Old business, does that mean any other, another action items I can believe? Old business grant update, I think we have covered that. Does anybody else have any other old business? Or any bank? What was the public comment?
Does Brian Graham have a, for the House at 8096 State? Is there a list of blight, what, what he defined as blight in the House and what was done to it?
We had an inspection done by a home inspector.
Okay, is there anything, was anything improved?
Blight was removed from inside the house, all the trash and garbage, all of that, and then it did... Anthem County Building Department will not inspect a home. I filed a complaint with the Health Department, and the Health Department would not inspect the home. So we had it inspected by a home inspector. Any other public comment? We will both public comment. We will accept the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by there, second by that, if you're all in favor, aye. 7:55.